Chairman, we are good. Thank you.
We're back. And if you could state your name and address?
My name is Echelle, E-C-H-D-L-L-E, Mohn, M-O-H-N, 9686 South O-G-O-G-L-E-S-D-Y Avenue. And then I saw what he just said, so I just wanted to help you out a little bit. Thank you so much for hearing us today. I know it's been a long day, so I don't want to keep you any longer. Y'all want to get home, right? So, our concerns as a community organization, I am the president of South Daring Manor Community Association. That has been in existence for thirteen years. As an individual, I am a part of the community that I was practically born in and raised in. And so, my fifty-four years in Jeffrey Manor is not just to sit at the table to talk about anything that is presented to you today, but to also give you a feel for where we are and how we're vested in our community. The points of how we come for you today is the zoning ordinance that I'm noticing from Section seventeen thirteen, correct? And so, there are some bullet points that the attorney and the testimony is going to address. However, we'd like to come back with twenty-five hundred residents that we represent and serve as our organization who are opposing this gas station and for these reasons. If, in fact, they were applicable to the standards of the zoning, we wouldn't be here tonight for special use. And so, therefore, there was a question as to whether or not the proprietor actually reached out to those ownerships, those residents that own the property on that particular block, and whether or not they were renters. We, of course, are not saying anything against anyone who's renting a property. We're just asking the question as to whether or not that was actually looked at in terms of how our aesthetics and what we look for in our community to move it forward, or to improve. And so, if not, in fact, not just the renters, but even the property owners or the property managers that may have the property near our property. So, there are some questions to that. Whether or not it was in the interest of the public, of course, you hear, you see three people before you, but we represent those members of the community, you say no. Because of the environmental impact, number one. I do believe one of the testimonies was that there was a gas station there before, and had any of them done their homework, they would have known our parents and our grandparents lobbied for those gas stations to be closed. And so, that's why they are no longer there. And the point of when the emails were sent to the Alderman, our Alderman was voted by the people in Jeffrey Manor to be the voice for us. And so, what his and what our partnership or relationship is that is that any business that is coming into our neighborhood because of the fact that we do want to keep the character and improve in a manner which we've asked and desired from his first term, we made a wish list, we said what we wanted from that very first year, we make sure that we uphold. Now, in this particular first term, there was a split, and I'm sure we are familiar with Alderman Gardens and the other Alderman. We, in fact, kept both Alderman as promised to what we wanted in that area. So, the email that did go out to Alderman was sent to us. And I am so sure in terms of the processes will be put in place that the Alderman did ask the proprietor to reach out to the association, which we have no record of. Our meetings are every second Saturday. The first email that we have listed is October nineteenth sent to Alderman. Our meeting was October fourteenth. The proprietor did not attend. October nineteenth was the next email, and then November first will be the next email. November eleventh was our meeting. The proprietor did not attend. January tenth was the email. January thirteenth was our meeting. The proprietor did not attend. So, in fact, wanting to really get a full scope as to whether or not the community, the full community, wanted this business in the area, we have the opportunity to attend those meetings. The testimony from the residents, and I do not have record of them being members of our association again, thirteen years. We started from Torrance to Constance from Ninety-Fifth to One Hundred and Thirty. And so, again, looking at the fact that we've got residents who have been in the area for over fifty years who do attend our meetings and are opposed to this business. We had several members who wanted to attend and have sent digital information as to why we are also opposing this aside from the environmental aspects, the traffic congestion. We have three gas stations on Ninety-Fifth Street. Ninety-Fifth and Stony, Ninety-Fifth and Constance, and then Ninety-Fifth and Eskenaba. Those are less than a mile away from one another. We do not need another gas station. In terms of bringing groceries to our area, we have a Jewels, we have an Alden's, we have a Chicago Fresh, we have a Food Mart, the Mogul, which was stated as American, is now Mogul, has food. The Sitco, which is on Ninety-Fifth and Eskenaba, has food. We have a Family Dollar, a Dollar Tree, a Dollar General. There's no need. We have the Target Market Survey. It's actually been done to find out whether or not this is what we need in our community. Of course, they would have found that we do not need another convenience store. There's nothing to upscale. And also, hearing in the testimony that what there's potential to come with this business, had the proprietor actually really sat down and had a conversation with the Alderman and the community to find out what potential to come to improve Ninety-Fifth Street corridor, they would have known that we already have, again, what we desire to see, and that did not include a gas station nor any other resale such as a convenience store to come on that corridor. And I'm sure the Alderman will speak to that. Twenty-four seven, it's definitely not within, that is an adverse effect to what we would like to have in our community, and we have mentioned that in several pages for this commission. If not in the letter, we would need to express that to our Alderman, who I'm sure has voiced that on our behalf. And I just want to make sure that I'm covering every point, if you don't mind. The fact that to bring another gas station when most who live in a neighborhood do not actually go to the gas stations other than, so most go to Indiana because it's cheaper and the tax is lower. Or they might go to One Hundred and Thirty, again, for the same reason. We do not need another gas station. So, I'm really perplexed as to why the proprietor has not reached out to the actual association whose membership does comprise the full community. And we do ask and humbly beg you to continue the denial of this special use permit.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you so much. My name is Naomi Chase. My address is ninety-six thirty South Merrill Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one seven. I have been a resident for fifty-plus years. I oppose the gas station because, and again, we already have three, you know, two of which is walking distance. Perhaps something else would be more useful to the community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate the brevity. Ma'am, could you state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Aquanet Thompson. My address is ninety-seven twenty-three South Oakley Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one seven. I want to speak on behalf of the residents that live on Ninety-Fifth and Yates. We are a very close community. So, those neighbors, once they receive the letter about the gas station coming, they personally contacted me and called me. They wanted to make sure that, you know, they were notified when the zoning hearings were going to be held due to the continuous of the various zoning hearings that have happened within the last few months. We would have had more residents here personally, or is it, we would have had the residents who actually live on that block of Ninety-Fifth and Yates. They are very concerned about a gas station there. They definitely don't want the long hours. Also, they're against the increased traffic congestion. They already have the hundred Jeff, the ZTA, Hundred Street Jeffrey bus that run down that route. So, a gas station on that corner would kind of have some kind of, you know, traffic congestion with the bus that turns from Ninety-Fifth Street onto Yates. So, that's kind of like a bad corner right there to have like a gas station with cars going in and out and a bus turning. So, these were some of the concerns that they had. So, the neighbors on Ninety-Fifth and Yates are opposed to the gas station. Also, myself as a resident, I'm opposed to the gas station for some of the reasons that they said that they wanted to bring a gas station because the other gas stations have crime. We don't need another gas station to bring additional crime to the community. So, therefore, I'm opposed to the gas station.
Thank you. All right. Alderman Mitchell.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to, I know you like brevity. So, I'm going to try not to speak over, speak again about some of the things that the president and the rest of the ownership of the Manor Association has talked about. The first thing I want to say is, I'm a little, you know, I'm born and raised in the seventies or Jeffrey Manor. That's where I was born. Been there fifty-four years. As a little kid, I sat in that park, called the Baby Park, but it's really called Crime Park, and visualized how I would develop my community that I got born with. And a lot of years later, I became the Alderman to adjust that. President Mohn mentioned that that part of my ward now was not part of the ward for the first, for my first two years, two terms as Aldman. And I was not able to do the things that I wanted to do. And as a result of that, if you talk with C-DOT Department of Planning, from Ninety-Fifth and Houston all the way down to Ninety-Fifth and Stony Island, there are Ninety-Fifth Street projects. There's nothing that really needs to be done between Stony Island and all the way down to Oakley Street. But that part that is now in my ward, that was redrawn, I took me off the ward because of political, I ran against the current Aldman at that time. I was unable to put my stamp on that part of the community. So, if you hear the trill in my voice, it was really offensive to hear what a person said about my neighborhood that I was born and raised and that my mother still lives in, that her mother started the block. Her mother, to categorize it like that, it was really, you know, I know it's supposed to sound thick-skinned because I'm an elected official, but that's my home. And that was really, that was really interesting for somebody that has no clue about my community, don't know the fabric of that community, don't know anything about it. But I digress. I've been working with the Department of Planning ever since that part of the ward came back into my ward. There is projects on the table for the two-hundred-thousand-square-foot lot between Paxton and Oakley Street. There are things on the table. They mentioned the Taco Bell on, you know, Clyde. Across the street, we're working on that as a project. Across the street from that site, we're working on that as a project. All of which is taking time, all of which I just got in to put my stamps on things. A lot of these people that spoke, they're not even close to my neighborhoods. There's only two people that mention the address that's even in the map. One was Katrina Worley, who, I'm actually kind of shocked because she mentioned the reasons, her reasons for wanting the gas station is the reasons that all the other residents don't want the gas station. So, that's kind of perplexing me. And she's been, she's my constituent also, childhood friend. She lives in Cal Heights. The reason, the reason that she gave to not have the gas station, I mean, to have the gas station is reasons that meetings she's been in, where the people said, "This is the reason why we don't want the gas stations." Because we talk about all this, what I'm going to do. I'm going to connect it to OEMC. I'm going to connect it here. I'm going to connect it there. None of you guys are responsible for anything that goes in that ward. This is a money grab. You see a vacant lot, an opportunity to purchase it, and we throwing a gas station up. And we're going to add a mini mart. Okay? Why? Aldi, Family Dollar, Dollar Tree, Dollar General, two smaller stores, Jewel. If you would understand the nature of that neighborhood, by the time you even got to Yates, traffic has died down because that's a bedroom community. When you get to that point, you're going home. You have already passed gas station and could have filled up. You've already went shopping. These seniors in this ward are not going to a mini mart. And by the way, these seniors in this ward that have been there for fifty, sixty years, they don't even call me Aldi. They call me Gregory because they put me in this position to build back up the neighborhood that has been neglected for decades. And it's real offensive that people that aren't even in the community come over, "We want the gas station." That's really colorful to waste this kind of time. The very first thing I did as Aldman, in the map, was start trying to get money to redo the infrastructure. The streets were the original, the streets, the curbs and streets were the original curbs and streets from when that neighborhood was built in the nineteen-fifties. I put thirty million dollars in there. You got a brand-new street.
Yeah.
Across the street, in preparation for the development of Ninety-Fifth Street, new lights, new infrastructure on the other side. People couldn't even walk across there. People would stand over there in the mud waiting for the bus, my mother included. They don't have to do that now. I got a TIF on that corridor that have earmarked, that have earmarked funds to continue development. I have developers that we, that, one of which spoke to the owner of the lot. But because he had already gave permission to, for the application, for to submit it, to put and make application for zoning board, we couldn't go any further. Why would you, because why would you spend money and time when they didn't know the outcome? And I got other developers, Magella, Clay Co., Landly, Sterling Bay. All guys, all guys I consulted, from the Department of Planning, Eric Assolte, the planning manager. We've laid out a plan, the new commission for the Department of Planning, from the neighborhood. We've laid out a plan, one-point-two-five-billion-dollar bond issuance in addition to TIF money, things that we're going to have available to redo that neighborhood. I appreciate the, you know, in putting this together, these thoughts about the security. Andre Bifford, the owner of the security firm, former fourth district officer, and somebody I know personally. He's the one that advised me on how to and what not to do in my community. If you ask him as a former fourth district officer, will a gas station and mini mart be conducive to right there, he would tell you no. They talked about, it meant these five criteria. It is not within the character of the neighborhood. Just as one example, if you look at the commercial spaces along Ninety-Fifth, it runs out at Oakley Street. There is an alley that separates business from residents. Going from Yates on down to Colfax, there is no alley that separates business from residents. So, that right there, that's why we need a special use because this was not the design for that area at that point. The plan for that area includes more homes, more homes, single owner-occupied, two flats, which are all in the works, but you guys already know, development takes a long time, and it's only so much money to go around. But those measures are being put in place. We've had community meetings to discuss other things, and this was discussed in my community, not necessarily. I had a community that we were discussing other things. We brought this up. Many, many, many people said the same thing, safety, you know, why do we even need a gas station? I don't go there. My childhood grandson, who's a police officer, was off duty and got attempted carjacking at the Shell on Ninety-Fifth Street. Marathon has had so plethora of issues, it should be shut down.
It should be. It should be.
It should be. So, all of the things that you're hearing, not just on the objection side, but on the fore side, and he referred to us as opposition, no, we're not opposition. We're lifelong homeowners, and I'm the Aldman of Jeffrey Manor instead of ward. So, I appreciate you putting respect on it, because that's where I was born and raised. These guys, once again, these guys don't even live here, man. It's laughable that they came in here with this cover. One last thing. Mr. Moshe. Do you have anything to do with any businesses in my ward?
Yes.
You've been in my office. You talked to my assistant, Keeney, this man is no stranger. I like this guy. He's no stranger. Man, you could have walked in and started talking to me about that. We've always had a good relationship. When I saw you today, I smiled. I'm like, what's going on? So, I didn't mean to direct, so I'm getting well up. You know, this is not, having a mini mart is not, I will go on a limb and say, your products will not be Aldi, which is a publicly traded, one of the best companies in America, that has no debt and is in every place. You will not have better products and better anything than Jewel. You know, we got our problems with Dollar Tree, Dollar General, and Family Dollar, but these are corporate-owned stores that when we have issues, we have recourse. I'm a legislator for City of Chicago. We're legislating right now to a better job at, for lack of a better word, making those dollar stores treat our neighborhoods a lot better. So, Chairman, what I'm saying is, you know, I appreciate when somebody wants to do something in my ward, but I really appreciate witnessing this in partnership with the community. This was nowhere near a partnership. This is an opportunity to take a vacant lot and put something there, which is a gas station. That, that, you know, he's not, nowhere in documents I see they would ask for any money from the city. So, my mind, my business mind goes to, when this gas station don't make the money that you brought to put, to keep up with the mortgage on the property, what you going to do then? The business model changes historically in all our businesses that are owned by entrepreneurs that are not from the community and that are not, that don't have the business acumen that neighborhoods like ours need to have to forecast that there's issues that's going to go wrong. There's going to be theft. There's going to be these kind of things. When you can't make that mortgage, that model is going to change. You're going to start selling tobacco products. You're going to start selling, you're going to do what you need to do to make that payment. And I've had that situation for nine years. I've shut down many businesses. Just as importantly as attracting the right businesses is not letting the wrong businesses in the neighborhood. I can go on and on, but I think you guys get the gist of it. So, I will reel this floor to you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Alderman. All right. We will now go back to the applicant for rebuttal and closing, and then we're going to open it up for the fourth question.
So, I would like to start off with, the Alderman is a woman-based. I think he's a good Aldman. Worked with him before. He knows me because I already attended meetings.
Slow down. Slow down.
I'm sorry. So, we're familiar with each other from regular task meetings, from multiple meetings of that and that. Most recent meetings, when I met you, I told you a month ago, I see you at Police Meet. No, I make sure the business is on the, I make sure with Alderman Harris, I'm right talking to him. Operation Neighborhood Safety. What was that meeting for? I don't want to get too detailed, regardless of the fact. He says I have businesses in his ward without no complaints, meaning that he has questions in terms of operation for the other businesses in the ward, which he's had, but none that's mine. The reason why is because we have security measures, as mentioned, which none of our other businesses have. I'd like to go on to say, the emails, I've sent multiple emails never, in regards to self-hearing, I've never gotten a response on to their meetings. And if they have approved, you show it, because my emails show no response at all. In terms of DPD, they approved food services retail three blocks away, and their hours are twenty-four hours. So, I don't see how this is not consistent. In terms of amenities, we're going to be providing the EV charging station, which is something that she mentioned that Duncan's going to have a bad yield. Well, that's something that we're going to offer, that no one else offers in the area. In terms of everybody driving to Indiana, the reason why is because of the lack of services. There's no ethanol in the community, which is usually fifty cents cheaper than regular gas. There's no EV charging stations, lack of services again. When they bring up all these, the idea is not, we're not going to compete for all these. We're not going to provide better products for all of these. That's a given. But the idea is, you know, a gas station, we're going to provide more services in terms of gas products, in terms of EV charging station. They keep mentioning originates and special use. That's a given. Every gas station has to go to special use. It's not because we don't have a proper LE or proper property size, or we're not asking for a variation too. Property is bigger than the community. So, in terms of that, I don't understand that. And in terms of gas stations in the area, again, they're not operated correctly, and they're not operated by me. Operated by other people, and they're concerned by them. But being that I'm already a business owner in the ward without no complaints at all, I feel like that speaks to my credibility because I'm an engaged community member. And if I knew of any meetings with self-hearing community, I would have shown it. And that's consistent with my other engaged communities, such as Rosemore Park Manor Association, which I regularly attend their meetings because I'm aware of them. As long as I'm aware, I'll attend same meetings as me, and the police is because I've gone to meet anyone who has, and including Sam, including Alderman himself. And so, the hours are not set. We can adjust the hours as needed if the community sees that twenty-four hours is not needed. However, from my survey, they support twenty-four hours. So, if they don't support twenty-four hours, that's fine. We adjust that as well. It's not part. And in terms of, I think that's it.
All right. Any questions from the board? All right. We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you, everyone, for your time. I appreciate all the input.
Next case, four thirty-eight twenty-three S, two forty-two East Thirty-Fifth Street. I have one in the file.
I can't. I don't think so. All right. Sir, are you the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, great. Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Okay. Nancy, if you could go ahead and read the department's recommendation?
I will. This is for calendar number four thirty-eight twenty-three S. The Department of Creative Development, document approval of the proposed barbershop. The department finds that this proposal complies with all personal standards of importance. In the interest of public opinion, we will not have a significantly adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the barber shops will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area and the body of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed barber shop should decide to vote.
All right. Sir, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Garrett Dickerson, two forty-two, this is Thirty-Fifth Street.
Okay. And you're looking to open up a barber shop?
Yes.
Can you tell us about your experience in barber shop business?
Been a licensed barber now for twenty-five years. Been a licensed barber now for twenty-five years. Current minister at, uh, Ice Star Church, Chicago, Bronsville. Current minister in my, uh, local church there in Bronsville for twenty years now. Pretty much do a lot of community work in the area.
And, uh, how many employees do you intend on having?
Four, including myself.
And, uh, I'll be licensed barbers? Uh, in the hours that you intend on keeping?
Uh, nine, eight, Tuesday through Saturday, Sundays and Mondays close.
Okay. Um, any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Next case, four forty-one, twenty-three S, twenty oh eight West Eighteenth Street.
Are we gonna turn for this one or no?
No, we're not.
Okay. Um, all right, if everyone who's planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, Nancy, uh. You gonna read the recommendation for this one?
It's residential. I'll second that.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll read the recommendation. Recommendation for four forty-one, twenty-three S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor within an existing two-story building to allow the conversion of existing unfinished ground floor space into habitable residential space to allow a two-story, single-family residence, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, prepared by six oh six Design. All right, so, um, uh, who is the applicant?
I am.
Okay, excellent. And, uh, you're looking to establish residential use below the, uh, second floor? And, um. Can you, uh, tell us about the, um, the street and the area and, um, whether there's other, um, residential uses on ground floor?
There are. On Eighteenth Street, there's considerable residential areas. It is a mixed-use area. There's considerable, uh, commercial as well. But when you travel westbound on Eighteenth Street, it is more residential than east where there is a, an auto body shop, a restaurant, and then the school. So, my house basically starts the role for the trend in residential going west.
Okay. Um, and, um, the, uh, the gentleman to your right, sir, uh, could you state, uh, your name and address?
I am Henry Jung, J U N G, certified listed appraiser. I live at eleven oh nine West Newport Avenue.
And did you prepare a report in this matter?
Yes, I did the appraisal and I did the written criteria for the special use.
And if you were to continue to testify, would you testify consistent with your report?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, sir, could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Heidi Gascon. I'm a project architect for this project, uh, this is six design construction. Okay, that's my question, avenue, Chicago, nice.
Okay. Uh, and did you prepare an affidavit in this matter?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
No.
We'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Next case, four fifty, twenty-three S, thirty-five, twenty, West diversity.
All right, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for counter number four fifty, twenty-three S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed expansion of an existing tavern, uh, ZB number fourteen, twenty-one S, on the ground floor of an existing two-story building out to a proposed roof-covered outdoor patio, provided the special use is solely the applicant. Ensignment Lounge LLC and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, prepared by Silvestro Design Operations. Counselor Augustin, you can proceed with the very short form.
Sure. Good evening, Chairman, again, Fred Augustin, um, for the record, lost Sam Banks on behalf of the applicant, Ensignment Lounge LLC, at the known tavern known as Ensignment Lounge. As you stated, we seek to have a patio, um, at the rear of the building, which is essentially an expansion of the patio, which requires a special use. I have two witnesses this evening, um, on behalf of the applicant, Mark Paulman, and our appraisers, Mr. Curran. First witness. Mr. Paulman, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Mark Paulman, twenty-six, thirty-one, Forest Sacramento Avenue.
You are a member of Ensignment Lounge LLC, is that correct?
Yes.
And the applicant does operate a tavern at the property, is that correct?
Yes.
You executed an affidavit, which I see was borne under your behalf, is that right?
Yes.
And if you continue your testimony, would it be consistent?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Curran?
Sure.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Silvestre J. Curran, Jr., and resident owner, S.J. Curran Associates, Bureau of State of Appraisers and Consultants. Office is at seventy-seven sixty-five, Mark, that in, in reverse.
Just to clarify, you actually testified before the court on the initial speech.
Yes, I did. It was January fifteenth, twenty twenty.
And you inspected the property as well as the surrounding properties? That relates to the expansion of the tavern, is that right?
Yes, I have.
And in your opinion, does the fourth patio comply with all standard for special use?
Yes, it does.
You took a very written report as well as expired affidavit, which I submitted to the board, is that right?
Yes, that is.
And if we continue your testimony, would it be consistent with your report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the board? Take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, four sixty-eight, twenty-three Z, seventy-nine, thirty-one, South Everheart.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Alfred Cucano. The architect of the office is at seventy East Lake Street, Suite one thousand, Chicago. To my left is John Delore, uh, the owner, sole member of the LLC applicant, and to my right is Project, uh, Architect Miguel Padino.
When everyone's planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you.
We are here today to seek the variation to reduce a lot area for these otherwise prohibited solely because of insufficient area of lot. We seek to reduce a lot area from four thousand square feet to three thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight square feet to allow the conversion of a three-dwelling unit to a four-dwelling unit on existing three-story building with basement. In this case, strict compliance with the standards of the Chicago zoning ordinance creates a particular hardship for the subject property because the basement unit has its own separate entrance. The height of the basement also conforms to the requirements needed for it to be a habitable dwelling unit. But due to the minimum lot size requirement, one thousand square feet, the fourth unit is only the misport of areas. Uh, in addition to variance with the less than ninety percent of the required lot size per unit, this would also allow the basement unit to become a viable additional dwelling unit in the chat neighborhood.
Yeah, you can have just ten square of their affidavits.
I have not testified before the board before, so if I can lay re-foundations to establish him as an expert, unless you wanna go straight by his, uh.
He's an architect?
Yes, licensed, listed, Illinois, state for.
You don't have to establish architects as experts, so you can just write his affidavit as well.
And just in the record. John Delore. In preparation of this hearing, we prepared an affidavit of your testimony, correct? Yes. And if you testified further, you could testify, uh, consistent with that affidavit. Correct. You don't have to state your name for the record? Miguel Padino. And, uh, you prepared an affidavit in regards to your testimony here today, correct? Correct. And it's, you call it testifying, you can testify, uh, consistent with that affidavit. Correct. Other questions from the board?
Any questions from the board? We'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Next case, forty-one, twenty-four S, thirty-three hundred, West Franklin.
And I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. For counter number forty-one, twenty-four S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a cannabis-infuser facility, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Big City Ventures Infuser LLC, DDA Smokies Edibles. Two, no retail sales, samples, or physical product displays or stock are allowed at this facility. Three, no cannabis growing or production are allowed at this facility. Four, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, prepared by Main Architecture and the Smokies Odor Mitigation Plan dated February one, twenty twenty-four, prepared by Building Engineering Systems. Five, details and final design for the odor control system and components, including but not limited to the size, type, and location of equipment, filters, rooftop mechanical units, and exterior system exhaust, et cetera, and details on the design and location of the airlocks, system layout, et cetera, are prepared by a qualified engineer and reviewed and approved by Chicago Department of Public Health prior to issuance of any building permits. And six, a fully detailed written final odor control plan detailing the proposed operations, maintenance schedule, and proposed remedies to address any system failures as well as any additional details requested by CDPH, prepared by a qualified engineer, is submitted for review and approval by CDPH prior to issuance of any building permits. Counselor Fatigas, you can go with the short form.
I'm gonna try and beat you on the recommendation, uh, right? I give it to you because I'm one of the attorneys of law, so this is Sam Banks. I'm here to be at the applicant, Big City Ventures Infuser LLC, which intends to do business as Smokies Edibles. Uh, we are proposing a cannabis infuser facility at the subject property, three three hundred District and Boulevard. Uh, the property is owned, MS two dash two, and within six hundred and sixty feet of a residential zoning district, which requires special use approval. I have five witnesses available to testify. On behalf of the applicant, Mr. Ryan Wright, our security consultant, Dan Farrell, our land planning consultant, George Thistle, our MAI-designated appraiser, Terrence O'Brien, and our traffic consultant, Mr. Michael Worth. Chairman, I would point out for the record, there were two objecting witnesses earlier today. The time, uh, that today took gave us a chance to talk with them, speak about operations. I do not wanna speak for them, but our understanding was the concern was odor, which we have an odor mitigation plan and then hours of operation, which we've already testified, we will testify to.
And there are no objectors here for the record.
Perfect. Uh, so with that, uh, Ryan, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Hello, I'm Charles Ryan Wright. I live at two six four nine Northeast Eightieth Avenue in Vancouver, Washington, uh, nine eight six six two.
And you are one of the managers of the applicant, Big City Ventures Infuser LLC?
Yes.
And Ryan, as we explained, um, you did, uh, we worked together to, uh, you have the witness statements on your behalf in this case. And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided, or facts and facts, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Farrell, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Daniel Farrell, thirty-six oh one West Albonard Street, seven thirty, Grove Meadows, Illinois, six zero zero two.
And, uh, Dan, you, uh, are a security consultant, uh, in practice?
Correct.
And you worked with Smokies, uh, in ownership of the property to implement a, uh, uh, security plan to involve both security personnel but also the, uh, security cameras in a round process, is that right?
Yes.
And, uh, Dan, it's your understanding, your professional opinion that that security plan will allow the facility to operate in a state of security, correct? Um, it's also, uh, your understanding that we worked together, uh, to put witness statements, uh, submit those with our findings of fact on your behalf? And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the statement you provided, is that right?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Thistle, um, can you please state your name and address for the record again?
Certainly, my name is George Thistle, uh, corporate Thistle Associates, offices at one forty-one West Jackson, Chicago.
And your role in this case was to prepare a land use report speaking of the standards, standards for special use criteria, uh, approval criteria, uh, regarding the, the special use application, is that right?
That is correct.
But your understanding, a, a copy of the written report has been submitted to the board?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify today, your testimony would be consistent with that written report, is that right?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien, uh, you can state your name and address for the record?
Sir, Terrence O'Brien, one four five River Drive, Rock Creek, Illinois, special, we just say, appraiser, consultant.
And Terry, your role is also to provide, uh, MAI report regarding land use as an impact of the potential or the proposed, uh, cannabis infusing facility, is that right?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I have prepared a two-hour presentation. I'm limited to.
Terry, uh, but you understand a copy of that, uh, report has been submitted to the board as part of, part of our findings of facts and middle, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your written report, is that right?
I addressed all the criteria that propose special use, fulfills all those criteria.
Thank you, sir. And lastly, last but not least, Mr. Worthman, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Michael Worth, named principal with the firm of Pennick Linger and O'Hara, on eight, I'll just say, ninety-five, seventy-five, West.
Mike, your firm provided a traffic impact analysis based on the delivery schedules, uh, coming to and from the property and the general use of a cannabis infuser at the subject site, is that right?
Correct.
And your, uh, conclusions are that the infrastructure, the existing roads, that support the limited, uh, number of deliveries and, uh, movements that this facility was generating?
Correct.
And, uh, a copy of your written report, you did pre-prepare a written report, is that right?
Yes, I did.
A copy of that written report is submitted, which is part of our findings of facts and middle?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with that written report?
Yes.
Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. You beat me on, a little bit longer. Um, if you have any questions of, of the applicant, Steve Ward, for all of them.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you. All right, I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to section two C four of the Open Meeting Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and test twenty presented in this open session. Commissioner Toya, second, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yeah.
I vote yes for a closed session.
Chair, can we, you want us to, can we leave or are you?
What are, what are we doing here? What are, what are we doing here?
I don't really know what we got going on.
I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes and we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. I move to approve all continuance requests and the date stated by me. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve all withdrawal requests. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the withdrawals are approved. I move to approve application for counter number forty-seven twenty-four Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number forty-eight twenty-four S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number forty-nine twenty-four Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number fifty-two twenty-four S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number fifty-one twenty-four S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number fifty-two twenty-four Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number fifty-three twenty-four S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
No.
Commissioner Rao.
No.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter does not pass for failure to receive three affirmative votes. I move to approve application for counter numbers fifty-four twenty-four Z, fifty-five twenty-four Z, and fifty-six twenty-four Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter number fifty-seven twenty-four S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter number fifty-eight twenty-four S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers sixty-two twenty-four Z and sixty-three twenty-four Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers sixty-four twenty-four Z and sixty-five twenty-four Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers sixty-seven twenty-four Z, sixty-eight twenty-four Z, and sixty-nine twenty-four Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers seventy twenty-four Z and seventy-one twenty-four Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers seventy-two twenty-four Z, seventy-three twenty-four Z, seventy-four twenty-four Z, and seventy-five twenty-four Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter number seventy-six twenty-four S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number seventy-eight twenty-four S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
No.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number seventy-nine twenty-four Z and eighty twenty-four Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers two ninety-three twenty-three Z and two ninety-four twenty-three Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
No.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter number three thirty-eight twenty-three S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number three ninety-eight twenty-three S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
No.
Commissioner Rao.
No.
Commissioner Toyas.
No.
I vote no, the matters denied. I move to approve application for counter number four thirty-five twenty-three S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
No.
Commissioner Toyas.
Uh, yes.
I vote no, the matter does not pass for failure to obtain three affirmative votes. I move to approve application for counter number four thirty-eight twenty-three S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter number four forty-one twenty-three S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter number four fifty twenty-three S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter number four sixty-eight twenty-three Z. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number forty-one twenty-four S. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing fine news effect consisting of the votes of the board. It is January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yeah.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, the resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Toyas seconds, Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Rao.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyas.
Yes.
I vote yes, we are adjourned. Thank you everyone.